We do not have a live broadcast today. Things down in the broadcast room are all kaput. So we're going to get a good recording and then we'll post it on YouTube and then rebroadcast later.
Sounds good. Well, if we're recording and it is 10 o'clock, I'll go ahead and get us started. Good morning, everyone. Happy New Year. Welcome back. And it is Monday, January 4th, 2021. It's 10 a.m. And this is the regularly scheduled Montrose City Council work session. And on work sessions, we just start right in on our agenda. But I'd like to thank everyone who has joined us. I am hearing my. Have no idea why.
No idea. Maybe.
So that's better. Okay. I'd like to thank everyone who's joined us, who's watching on Zoom. And as Mr. Story said, we're not able to broadcast live this morning on the website, but we are recording this and we'll be rebroadcasting it. And it'll be available for anyone to watch anytime. So if you're joining us for our work session, thank you very much. We'll go ahead and get started. The first item for discussion is the Montrose Royal Flood Mitigation Project. Some background information about that. So I will ask city engineer Scott Murphy to give us an update on that project and tell us a little bit about it. It's not really an update because this is the first we've actually officially talked about it. So more of an introduction than an update.
Yeah, exactly. So thank you, Mayor. So yeah, the reason I put this on the agenda, some previous councils, and I don't know if you were in those, Barbara, if there was some overlap or not. Previous councils had met with Montrose County FEMA, some emergency managers and the hospital. I'm looking at general hazard mitigation for the, you know, region wide, which includes, you know, flood mitigation, flood modeling, things of that sort. I think it was prompted, I wasn't involved with those efforts, but I think a lot of those were prompted with some money that they got from FEMA or the state to hire a consultant to help with hazard prioritization and mitigation, you know, throughout the region. So found itself kind of found its way into this council in our world. Couple of months ago, the hospital in the county started looking more seriously at some of the flood hazard mitigation surrounding the Montrose Memorial Hospital. And I'll get into the details on that. But at that point, folded our department in to start looking at what kind of projects and the nuts and bolts of the details of some of that mitigation looks like. So that's the background of why we're talking about here when that came up, because previous councils had been involved. We asked if this council wanted to at least hear about the product and the previous work that had been done. And that's what's prompting today's thing. So no action, no looming action at this point. Mostly just to get you guys up to speed on the previous discussions and history as we understand it. So you'll know it'll be up to speed with things come our way in the future. So all screen share here. Just one second. Show you some maps. Did I get the right screen? Are you guys seeing my cursor over here? Okay, perfect. So the Montrose Royal is a major drainage way that runs through town. This map is oriented north to south. Starts down at kind of the headwaters are down here by up above Brown Ranch. Runs down, it's kind of one of the primary drainage ways through town. Zooming in on it here, it runs through the Bridges Golf Course, runs alongside Columbine Middle School. Let's get the 12th here. Let's see, let me zoom in and find that. Yeah. So here's the new Columbine Middle School here, crosses 12th Street there. Snakes through town. If you walk along like the Paseo de la Royal Trail, that's the Arroyo that you're walking along is the Montrose Royal. And then it hits the Montrose Memorial Hospital, goes underground in a about a five foot diameter culvert. Five to six for several blocks, pops back out and then goes underground again, right alongside Junction Avenue. So think of like horse flying felonies over there. It's piped for a couple of blocks there. And then runs out again before joining Cedar Creek, which then joins runs out through the hospital, through the airport and ultimately joins the Uncompagated River. Let's see. So the flows on the Arroyo. So this during a, they've done some previous modeling and studies back in the 19, late 1970s to look at. And this was kind of with FEMA's original push to do all the flood hazard mapping and things of that sort. To look at flows and floodplain extents on the Arroyo. Kind of using 1970s technology. So the mapping wasn't great, but a lot of that mapping is carried over to today. From those studies, I figure during a hundred year event, which as you expect is an event that has a one in 100 year chance of happening, but could happen on any given year. So it could happen, you know, this summer. You never know what's going to happen, but statistically happens once every hundred years. That flow is about 1100 cubic feet per second, which by comparison, the Uncompagated River in the spring peaks out usually around 1,000 CFS. So if you can imagine this little creek, and it's pretty unassuming most of the time, if you drive past that or walk along that trail, it's several CFS as a typical base flow. So if you can imagine putting 1,000 plus of that through this system, what that would look like. And it's, and their mapping attempts to quantify that. So these are the FEMA maps you can just observe online at the FEMA Map Service Center. But what happens is you bring that much flow down through here. And again, this is all based on the mapping in the seventies. And you're really limited by the street crossings. So you get a big flow like that, it hits a street crossing and that flow starts spilling out into the streets. So what you see here is, you know, that flow, the Arroyo can't handle it. And so it kind of finds its way through the street network, which is not bad. Streets are meant to convey really large flows during the large event. The idea is they go down the streets and not through houses. So that's a, that's a good thing. Generally, streets are lower than the houses. You know, peels off some of that flow and ends up ultimately down by the railroad grade and then portions continue along. If you follow the mapping here, when we get to the hospital, you can see the hospital culvert that goes along there has a capacity of only about 200 CFS. So, you know, 20% the size it needs to be. It's the hospital's responsibility. They're the ones that piped it back in, you know, the 50s or 60s or something. I don't know exactly when that was piped, but when they did the studies in the seventies, it was already piped kind of in its current configuration. But the floodplain mapping does extend into the hospital itself. Kind of two caveats there is, you know, just because it extends there, that's a product of the mapping abilities they had at that time. And so whether that means the hospital would get wet is uncertain. And whether that means that would actually enter the hospital and cause problems is also uncertain. But again, you know, the, the known hazards there. So it's a matter of looking closer at that and we'll dive into that here in a minute. But you know, the mapping continues and runs down through and then has a constriction again at the future crossings or some of the other crossings. And runs out. So again, the impetus for this product is really understanding the risk to the hospital. The reason we're involved, you know, so the hospitals, the hospital itself and the county, they're kind of together. But the city is involved in that we, you know, have jurisdiction over the remainder of the system. And you can't fix one problem on a, you know, so you can imagine on a drainage way, you can't just fix one constriction and not evaluate and understand the impacts that that has on the rest of the system. So if you, you know, say like here where a lot of this is spilling out, say the city said, oh, this is causing some flooding here, let's upsize these crossings. Well, now we're just pushing that problem to somewhere else. And somebody who wasn't being flooded before is now being flooded. So the design and study of these things, you have to look at the essentially the entire system and really understand the issues and stage your improvement or sequence your improvements, a lot of times downstream to upstream, so that you don't push the capacity and push the issue onto somebody else. So we're involved in that way. We've been working with the county and the hospital. All stop screen sharing here. To kind of look at the initial phase that which we envisioned being a kind of comprehensive study of the entire Arroyo system. Using, looking at modern day flow quantification. So again, you know, they said it was 1100 CFS, but that was based on old technology. And they said it was, could possibly flood the hospital and flood all these other areas, again, based on 1970s computer and modeling technology. As you can imagine, that stuff's come a really long ways. So it's a great opportunity to revisit those models and truly understand the issue. If there really is an issue or if the street system can handle it. And, you know, with a couple of localized improvements or strategic improvements in several places, we can understand where the biggest bang for our buck is. So right now there's no projects in the pipeline for this work. The document to procure a, you know, specialty consultant to look at this modeling and all that is kind of circulating for review. The city prepared it initially, circulating for review with the city or with the county and the hospital. But I'm recommending to them, we don't, they're going to pursue some FEMA flood hazard mitigation grant funds, which can make several million dollars of funds available. As you, as you can imagine, fixing problems of this scale are relatively expensive. So you know, a project like that, even if it was a quarter match, but split amongst the various stakeholders can become a very reasonable, doable project for our community with a lot of benefit for our community. Obviously, the, you know, the city isn't over the hospital, but we benefit, you know, if the hospital were to be damaged in a flood, we would all suffer. And so we have, we have interest in that way. So, you know, with that, I think that's really where it sits right now. And that's the background. And happy to answer any questions if anybody needs any more background on that project.
Thank you very much, Mr. Murphy. Does anyone have questions?
I do.
Great. Go ahead.
So what kind of liability is there for the city? I don't want the hospital to flood, but if it did, could they hold us liable?
The, I see Stephen turn on generally. So Drennan's Law is if someone were they are responsible for piping it in a way that does not create problems. You know, so they were the ones that piped it for their hospital in the 50s or 60s, whatever we can tell. And so, you know, that liability remains with the person who piped it. So in that case, it appears that was the Montrose Memorial Hospital, as best as we can tell. So, you know, that's something we'd hang our hat on, but I'll turn to Stephen if he has anything to add.
No, that, that's accurate. I think our biggest liability is not necessarily with the hospital, but any of the homes or in the neighborhood that would flood, they would be suing both the city and the, and the hospital. But this is one of those things where liability is a small part of the question because the bigger picture is doing what's right and not, you know, only doing something or working it through just because we could get sued. But yes, Scott, that Scott's perfectly right. The, the, from a strict legal liability, we don't have any. Do we have some, do we have skin in the game? Absolutely. Do we have some ethical and moral responsibility? Absolutely.
Yeah. So I also wondered, it, it looked from your, that map you blew up, that it goes under the main runway at the airport. I think that's three, five, the big runway. So is that a pretty adequate piping or would we risk closing the airport down?
Um, generally every crossing on this system is undersized for a hundred year event. And that dates back to as far back as we can tell on the record. The airport one set up a little better. And right now, you know what happens now is there's so many upstream constrictions that a lot of that flow peels off elsewhere and doesn't even reach those downstream areas. And that's kind of raising the importance of modeling this thing as a whole. So I wouldn't be worried about the airport right now. The other reality of these storms is they're very flashy. So these big storms that we get hit are going to be a monsonal, you know, large late summer event that, you know, just happens to be really big and plop perfectly over the basin. You know, fortunately, you know, recently they've all, the big storms they've had have been relatively isolated and only hit on portions of the basin. So when that worst case scenario hits, it would, the flood would come and go pretty quick. And so, you know, you might lose a couple of flights, but in that case, you know, the waters would recede and the runway may even be built high enough now that it would just flood peripheral to the runway and when causing the infrastructure damage. So I wouldn't be too worried about the airport. If I was the airport, it's ultimately their, their deal. But I think that's a lower vulnerability on the system.
Thanks, Gus.
And that brings up a good point too. So the city has been working on a design of the upsizing of the crossing from south first to north first, the one that goes under Main Street. We've been looking to improve Junction Avenue through that area. With that, kind of even before this project came into our world, we were looking at upsizing through there, through that area. Again, because you can't fix one restriction without fixing some of the others. So that may line up well with the city product if something needs to be done at the hospital in the future.
God, do we have a projected estimate of what's going to take to redo this survey and mapping?
I think the design element would be one to 200,000 if I had to guess. It's pretty extensive. You have to go and re-survey all of the cross-sections and all the topography throughout the whole system. And that's the total cost. So if FEMA's footing the bill for 75% of that, and then the remainder were, you know, just hypothetically saying split three ways between the, the county, the hospital and the city becomes a relatively low cost out of pocket for us. And those, those would take the form of, if once we get to that point, I think the next piece would be an IGA between those three entities to kind of get all that ironed out before diving into that.
This is in this case, one of those spend a dollar to save $200 kind of scenarios. So there's definitely value because if we aren't prepared for the flood, then it's going to cost a whole heck of a lot more.
Yep, certainly.
Any other questions for Mr. Murphy about this?
I just want to make a comment on Roy's question with the airport. Several years ago, when I was on the airport board, that was discussed. And I saw, I know that they're well aware of the potential of it.
Great. It doesn't look like there are any more questions or comments. Thank you very much for giving us that information. That'll be helpful if and when we see it again to, to know that this is happening and going on and that these discussions are in progress. Thanks very much. Great.
Thank you.
Okay. Next thing on our agenda this morning is the Public Safety Complex Contract Amendment Recommendations. And I will ask Public Works Manager Jim Shad to tell us a little bit about this.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Seems like it's been a while since I've had an item for discussion. So it's several projects going and the new budget year, I think we'll be talking quite a bit in the next coming meetings. So this, this first one is a contract amendment for Blythe Group. And there are the architect of record on the new police department project. And so this contract was approved by council, I believe, back in August. And so these are some small additions to it, some of the items that were part of the proposal, but were not accepted at the time. And so that's why I'm bringing it back to you now to amend that original contract that you approved. And so these items, the audio visual design and the FFNE, which is furniture, fixtures and equipment. Those two items are small in nature compared to the overall design, but they were part of an alternate proposed by Blythe originally. We did not accept them at the time because we wanted to get into design further, kind of really see what those entail. And if it were feasible for us to do them internally, within the city or look at procuring them in another way, maybe it would be better or more efficient to hire a separate consultant for those things. And as we've gotten to know Blythe and they've really got involved in our city operation and part of our team and learned more about what exactly the audio visual design and the FFNE really entail. We've, we've definitely come to the conclusion that it would be best to hire them for those services and add that to their contract. And so that's why we're here now to discuss that and ask for your approval to add that to their contract. So the additional services for audio visual design is a $31,618 ad. And the FFNE design and oversight through bidding. Because that would be a direct to owner contract, but it would be designed and overs, oversaw by the design team. And that's an ad of $34,860. And so again, in the, the big picture, you know, their overall contract, it's a relatively low amount. But coming to the end of design, we're getting, in the last stage of design now, we're kind of buttoning up some of these small items and, and getting them in the, the right contract. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
Well, the total, it looks like it's going to be about $65,000, $66,000 in addition. If we did it ourselves, what would that total have been?
Well, so we came to kind of the conclusion that we aren't really capable of doing it internally. We would have to have hired a consultant at some point. And especially like the furniture design, when that was probably the easiest to, it's the most relative, I guess, in that we, we, we don't have the ability to procure it as well as a consultant that does it through a design team. And Blythe now is so involved in our operation that they understand it very, very well. When, if we were to hire another consultant, we would spend a lot of time just training them basically into what our operation is and what our police department needs. Where Blythe has already got the head start. They know as well as just about anybody, how our operation is going to work inside the police department. So I, we don't have a cost of what it would have cost us internally. We just know that we would have had to have hired several different consultants to do that same work and would have had to backstep in training them to get up to speed with our operation.
But this is something that we really need and it isn't like a luxury item on this contract.
No, no, it's definitely a very normal part of construction of a new building, furniture and fixtures. Obviously you wouldn't want to come into an empty building. And the furniture definitely is very specific to the operation in that it's got a special use. It's not just a table. There's a lot of different types of furniture, for example, in different areas of the building. Same with audio visual. I think we learned that through this design that it's actually a lot more specific and a unique item than maybe it has been in the past. Just because of audio visuals becoming much more common use for a tool in the police department. So again, that's why they are specialized at that and have that in their, their background. They, they perform this type of service on other projects too. So this is not, this is not their first rodeo in, in the audio visual FFNE procurement. They, they've done this before.
So it seems you've just kind of confirmed my belief that it'd be far more efficient to use these guys who are already in the middle of the design. And as Mr. Frank said, it's, it's really a crucial part of the whole total package. And so I think it's really critical. Will we need to vote on this at a city council meeting then?
I believe so. I believe this will come to the next council meeting for a vote.
In two weeks, it's not tomorrow.
Not tomorrow, no, two weeks.
Okay, cool. Thanks.
I only have one reference point, but on the rec center, we did a lot and as much internally as we could. But we used our architect for FFNE and I can't imagine not doing it that way. It makes a lot of sense. And overall, I think it ended up saving money.
It will, will the audio visual stuff be compatible with our cameras, our body cameras? Or maybe that's a question for Blaine.
Yeah, look, Blaine and Greg, yeah, I think the answer's maybe. So, well, we're working on it. We need to ensure that we go out for RFQ for, for those things and we're in the process of doing that. But at the end of the, the whole process, we will absolutely make sure that whatever audio, audio visual for our interview rooms, all of that stuff is absolutely compatible with evidence.com, which is the central repository for all of that stuff. The body cameras, the fleet cameras, eventually the interview room systems and all of those things. So yep, we've already consulted with, or I've consulted with a few police chiefs who have, who have made some recommendations. And we've already had a few vendors that have reached out and we're working with them for proposals.
Great. I can see that's probably a very highly specialized area and, and one that's, that's absolutely necessary.
Yeah, it's right there on the, on the top priority list to make sure all of that stuff works correctly. Because if it doesn't, then there's some huge consequences for that. So, thank you.
Yeah. Didn't we see police buildings where the Axon cameras were used in the interview rooms and, and really in the same system as the body cameras and the vehicle cameras?
Yeah, Axon does provide an interview room system. And I can, you know, certainly let Greg chime in here if he wants, but they do provide a system installation, all of those things that works with evidence.com. There are other vendors that also provide a system that then the repository can go into evidence.com. So there are two ways that we can go. And the main thing that I want to make sure of is just that it's easy to use and officer walks in, pushes a button, he knows it's working or she knows it's working. And we can get those interviews recorded. And I think that's our, that's our overall goal. And then cost, always looking at the cost as well.
Makes sense. Counsel Frank.
Right. And I don't have much to add. Blaine covered most of it, but we are getting, we'd like to stick with Axon or something very compatible with Axon. But we are doing a due diligence and getting bids from other companies too. If, if for no other reason, just to keep everybody honest and make sure we get, we get competitive bids.
So this amendment to the contract, was this something that we should have been on the ball on, including in the original contract? Or is this something that just kind of came up out of the blue?
No, this is something we've been monitoring from the beginning. And again, it was listed as alternates on Blythe's proposal. But we wanted to get this far into it to make sure we were doing it the most efficient way. You know, there, we do have procurement processes of our own internally. We do have the ability to do some of this, but we wanted to get into the details of that to see if it was possible for us to do entirely inside or if we would have had to hire it out. So it, it took some learning on our part to really understand the scope and to working with Blythe really to kind of understand what that would take and if we can do it internally. And through that, we still have time. That's why it's coming in this late. It's kind of one of the last phases of design. This is the last few little pieces we put in. So we're not necessarily behind the eight ball by any means, and we did see this coming. We knew that it needed to be done. We just didn't include it in Blythe's contract originally, just so we could further evaluate it.
So we didn't know what we didn't know.
Right. Yes. And now we know.
Any other questions from council about this? Okay. I don't see any. Thank you very much, Mr. Shad for bringing it to us. And we look forward to seeing it at an upcoming council meeting. Okay, let me go back to the agenda. Next thing on our agenda is the 2021 city owned property disposal list. Got a list of old vehicles here. If they were in my garage, I could just get rid of them. But when they're government vehicles, we've got to talk about them publicly and go over each one and, and make a decision. So I'll kick it back to our public works manager.
Yep. Thank you. Yeah. And you're right. These are vehicles to be replaced this year. So these are, we do this list every year. They're mostly related to vehicles we've budgeted for replacement in our fleet division. So that is what a majority of this list is, is vehicles that are being replaced. And we will sell the, we'll sell all of these vehicles on GovDeals. That's kind of where we've had the most success recently. We are getting very good return on resale value on our used vehicles. So we, we have in the past sold at auction and in some other ways. But I think this list would be primarily sold at GovDeals. And again, it's primarily vehicles that are being replaced. There is a couple of items that are not being replaced. One of them is the ADM asphalt batch plant. So it's on the list and may have noticed it. It is not being replaced. So it's not just to be disposed of. And that's why it's on this list. With that, I mean, I would answer any questions. I don't know what else to say about it other than these items are projected to be over $1,000 and that's why they are on the disposal list. I don't know what else to say about it, other than these items are projected to be over a thousand dollars, and that's why they are on the disposal list. And I think in the past, this has been on the consent agenda, and we could do that again if if you think that is appropriate, or we can put it as an agenda item, whichever one you'd like.
That's a that's a great question. Does council have any questions? This is a fairly routine matter, and we could indeed put it on a consent agenda at an upcoming meeting. Counsel Frank?
Just for clarification for the public, that every one of these items is available for sale to the public. They just have to go on the website, bid on it, win the bid. That this this isn't like some special deal that anybody's getting. This is very, very open.
That's right. Yeah, govdeals.com is a public sale site, and our vehicles are on there and many others too. It's a really popular way for government agencies to sell their equipment and vehicles. So, yeah, I highly recommend it. There's you get some really good deals on there. And for us, we we get good return on ours, our used vehicles. So, yeah, I recommend govdeals.com.
Thanks.
If any homeowner wants to buy a crack seal machine, here's your opportunity.
That's right.
I always think watching Chipper's work is fascinating, but I don't think I need to own one for my own backyard. Anyone have any questions or any objections to seeing this as part of a consent agenda going forward? Any concerns?
I was just curious if if you'd looked at the possibility of donating any of these to other communities in our area, if it makes sense, or if there's anything that's worth donating, I don't know.
Yeah, you know, that has come up. I guess we don't really, we don't really pursue, but sometimes things like that come up where other agencies in our area may have a need and and they will request that. That happened, I believe, two years ago. We did donate a police interceptor vehicle. So I think that's kind of case by case. And when that request comes up, we definitely consider it. I don't think we actively pursue that, though. We haven't asked if anybody's in need of anything.
I was just curious. I I don't object to putting it on the consent agenda.
My my thought probably on that is that it I I think from the taxpayer perspective, it's better for us to get some return on the outdated equipment. Although I don't have any objection to donating specific equipment to somebody, a fellow community that's in dire need. But I think that from the taxpayer standpoint, it's better to get something back.
Sure, yeah, yeah, it's just a question of whether or not there's a community need that we can sort of contribute to as a as a good partner in in the valley here, that's all.
Yeah, I don't think anybody's reached out to us this round, Jim, from neighboring communities. Normally, they they kind of know our timeline, and they'll reach out to us via email or give us a call.
I haven't heard anything this year.
Good to know. Okay, great, thank you very much. And it looks like you've also got the next agenda item, which is twenty twenty one vehicle purchase recommendations.
Yep, yep, so this this is also fleet related. This is our Ford order for the year. So this is one of the first ones we try to get out, mainly due to lead time, trying to get the vehicles in as soon as possible. But yes, we we group all of our Ford orders for the year into a single bid, and that's what this is. So the this is similar to last year. We had a very large Ford order last year as well. We have several vehicles up for replacement, and many of those are police interceptor vehicles. And those are the ones that really kind of fill up this budget. There there's quite a quite a few on there. I think there's five additional and four replacement interceptors. And so that's a that's a big chunk of this order. But this is again related to the replacement schedule that we just talked about, that all of the other vehicles on here, other than the five additional, are replacements. So as we purchase a new vehicle, we are selling the old vehicle. And so we did, we received three bids. And from a purchasing standpoint, there's no real difference for us other than cost. Because when it comes to warranty work or recall items, anything like that, we would we would use the same vendors and suppliers for that regardless. So from a purchasing standpoint, it really is just about cost and complete qualified bids, which all three of the bids we received were definitely qualified. And all the all the bids look really good, were very complete in detail. So the lowest price on this one is Siltahar, as you can see on the on the chart there. And even when local preference was applied, Siltahar was still lower. So with that, we are recommending Siltahar for this purchase. They are out of Brumville, which is near Denver. We have purchased from them in the past. I believe it was two years ago, our Ford order went through them. We had great results, they did a good job, had no issues. So, yeah, for those reasons, recommending awarding to Siltahar for a total of nine hundred and fifty three thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars.
I'm doing some math and looking at our local preference. Can you remind me what percentage that is?
It it is five percent up to fifty thousand dollars. So when it's applied to the Montrose Ford order, it actually comes, it's very close. It compares out at nine hundred and fifty eight thousand, one hundred and sixty three would be the comparison amount if we apply the fifty thousand to the Ford bid, the Montrose Ford bid, sorry.
Right. And it's still, even if we didn't max it at fifty thousand and did a full five percent, it's still higher than the lowest bid.
Yep, it's very close, but yeah, still still higher.
I'm glad we have a formula for that, because it seems like we know in in here that we should be doing a local preference. And I suppose the fairest, most uniform way to apply that is to come up with a formula, which we have, which is part of our policy, which we implement across the board.
Yeah, and it does come up, we use it often, I would say. And in this case, it's very close, but is still Siltahar is still lower.
Yeah. Any other council comments or questions? Okay, in this, we will see at an upcoming meeting to formally vote and approve this purchase.
That's right, you have two weeks at a council meeting.
And it is slightly, it is under the budgeted amount for vehicle replacement and purchase.
It is, yep.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that is the that is all of the formal items for discussion. So I'll move on to our next agenda item falls under general city council discussions, which is an opportunity for council to bring up things they might be thinking about for discussion or throwing it out there for ideas, anyone? Yes, Mr. Frank?
Um, I have been in contact with the transit here, the regional transit, about getting on their board. Terry Wilcox currently serves on their board, and they have been back in touch with me and been we've been in communication. But again, this flare up of COVID has set things back as far as actual getting together and and meeting. But it's all just, it's proceeding kind of on pace. Personally, I just want to make a note that I have absolutely no objection to Ms. Wilcox staying on that board also. I think she's done a fantastic job, and I want to give her kudos for all the work she's done in that capacity. And just as on a personal note, I will be undergoing some surgery, and I'll be out of pocket for probably the rest of this week, for sure. This or, you know, I won't be at the council meeting tomorrow night.
And best wishes and 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 for a quick recovery from your surgery. Have a really good dinner, so you can stop eating at midnight or whatever's required. You're muted.
I had to start doing the cleanse yesterday, so, yeah, Jell-O's all I'm getting to eat for the next.
Oh, man, well, best wishes for speedy recovery. Back to the board, I think that the city of Montrose has one seat on that All Points Transit Board. But I think that during our council retreat in April, which we hold every year, where we talk about the different board appointments that we all fulfill as part of council's obligations. We can, instead of just reshuffling those, we could perhaps go back and talk about which community organizations we have seats on and why we have seats on those and which ones are voting and which ones are advisory and and look at those and which ones need to be fulfilled by a council member versus a city staff member and really kind of do a little bit of a deep dive into those boards, positions that are that a city council or staff member holds, why we hold it on that particular board, what the history is. And I think that would be interesting, and that will add that to our maybe our retreat agenda in April, if that's okay with everyone.
I think that'd be very helpful, because there was a lot of confusion on some of the boards when we assigned those board positions in our retreat in spring, that we did, it didn't never really discuss any of those things. And so I think there was a lack of clarity on why we have that board position, how many, who, et cetera, et cetera. I think that's a very, very good point, Barbara, and I'd love to see that.
Great, okay. Any other council members have anything they want to talk about? Okay, I still want to talk about affordable early childhood education in Montrose. There is an organization that is putting together a proposal for a comprehensive survey of current childcare, early childhood, zero to five options in our community, and not only official licensed facilities, but surveying families and finding out who is caring for their zero to five year olds, whether that's in home or with grandma or in a licensed facility. And they are asking for some financial support from the city. And with your permission, I'd like to invite them to an upcoming work session to to tell us about what they're proposing and and what they're asking from the city. I see some nodding from a majority of councils. So we'll put that on an upcoming work session to have them tell us a little bit about that. And we can talk about whether that is something that we would want to help fund to better understand our early childhood options. And I think we know it's a problem in our community. Sometimes knowing a little bit more about the problem is helpful in solving it. Okay, um, anything else on other counselors' minds? Y'all are quiet. Okay, good. Then I will move on to staff comments. Any of our managers, department heads, or our city manager's office or our attorney have any? Mr. Murphy, what's up?
I got a homework assignment for everybody. So today, we've gotten far enough along on the Woodgate realignment, property acquisitions, that we can now go public with things. So today, you'll see a press release coming out that will speak to with a map showing the realignment project, kind of speak to the progress. Typically, we would do an open house for these kind of things, but with COVID, we now get to have a Scott's Open House. And we recorded a video giving a lot of that information that on the product background and such. So we're seeking the public's feedback that way. We will discuss kind of council's next actions at the upcoming work session. But ahead of that, if you get a chance to watch that video, it's about twenty minutes long. That may save time at the meeting. If if anybody wants to go through that presentation in detail, we can do it at the work session also. But if you get a chance to watch that ahead of time, that would help.
Scott, I'm wondering if you will, in this press release, like it's already gone out. So, but did you talk about some of the financial aspects of it? You know, we had some political issues around one topic, and I'm just curious how much got sort of made public and covered.
Um, are you talking about the house thing?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, so the the present, the presentation is focused on traffic patterns and drivers and modeling for the project. I can speak to that if if you'd like. So the project, when the when you guys will see, it'll come out this afternoon. The road is situated alongside a house there on East Oak Grove that's not directly impacted by the project, but would have a lot of construction traffic right alongside it for a year and ends up having a road right behind it. It was for sale, and we didn't want a new home buyer to end up buying our first home, then realize they're going to have a road right next to it and have to deal with all that construction noise. So we bought it with the intent of, we do, long term, if there's going to be a roundabout up there, we do need a little corner of property. So we'll clean all the property pieces of that up. And then the intent is to resell that house after the product is done. We just felt that that was the right thing to do to avoid negatively impacting that residential house. In the meantime, we've rented it out. And as we're actually renting it, in this case, to new employees, because we're having so much problem with getting recruits here, that when they come here, they can't find housing. We've had people turn around after we've given them job offers. And so we're renting it to them on a month, you know, just on a month by month basis, until they can find a place to live when they land. Again, this is a several month thing, just to get us through the construction, and we intend to sell that house when the product is complete. So, so I didn't go into that in that video, but yeah, if you have any questions on that, happy to fill in some of those gaps.
That's that's good. I just was curious. Thank you.
Scott, I think it would be really beneficial for the public to understand our motivation, all of motivations for buying that house, one of which was the house was for sale, and we, as a community, didn't want to negatively impact the sellability of that house by the former owner by suddenly having this information come out and just totally tank their ability to sell their house. So there was a pretty, I think, noble motive behind that as well, that would be good to mention.
I think you you talk about the the owner that was trying to sell the house, and I just kept thinking about that first time homeowner that they saved, they saved, they buy their first home, and then the city says, by the way, we're putting a major road next to your front yard. And I think I I think us, the city buying it was is a little bit of an unusual move, but I think in the end, it definitely was the right thing to do. And now we can talk about that, that the other property alignments have all been done, and that's more public information.
And that'll make a lot of sense now, too. If you watch the video, it goes into why it is situated where it is. And actually, there there is already a right of way strip there. It's it's in the same location, it's always been in the comp plan. But again, all the construction impacts and everything. So that'll that'll become pretty obvious once once all it's out today, so.
Great, thank you very much for working on that, Mr. Murphy. I I walked through the Woodgate neighborhood and noticed a lot of really cool sewer work happening. If you think it's really cool to look down really deep holes at the different layers of geology and the old pipes, now's your opportunity. How's that project coming along?
Surprisingly, really well. So we've been dreading this project, because it's it's hundred percent in people's backyards and under fences. And and we have the right contractor for the for the job. It's Haynes, and they're being very surgical in their approach. A lot of happy homeowners and a lot of them, when I walked the product, I can't even tell where they've been. My inspector has to show me, oh, they they've already replaced this, and I can't even tell. So, which is exactly what we want in that kind of application. So getting there on track should be done ahead of schedule and and tracking well, so.
Good. We know that the sewer upgrades were really desperately needed in that subdivision. Will the homeowners notice any improved performance? Were they having problems, or are we just nipping it in the bud before the whole system failed?
So there's kind of two main components of the system. We're repairing all of the main lines. And so the the problem was, you know, the the main lines had, they're, every one of these was had joint separation, deformed and cracked pipes and really bad root intrusion. So there's a lot of groundwater in that neighborhood, a lot of cottonwood trees. And so we were able to stay ahead of it, never really had any major problems. But it was only a matter of time before a problem hit in a place that we just planned couldn't get to, and then we would lead to sewer backup. So they're just at a lot lower risk overall, because we're able to better respond to the system. And I think they will see, you know, the the houses themselves, they own the private service lines. They'll see an added improvement, because if they ever need to upgrade theirs or change theirs, they now have better access to our main line, better, it's obviously all mapped, and now has a lot more clean outs and manholes on it. So that if they ever need to upgrade, it's a lot easier for them to do. So, you know, the if they have a bad line, they'll still have a bad line. So you know, the, if they have a bad line, they'll still have a bad line on the private side. But if they ever need to work on it, it'll be a lot easier for them to do that.
On that private law side, on their line, is, does the city still have a program that offers some financial help to anyone throughout the city who has a problem with their private line that connects to the sewer?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I don't, I don't, I think their private infrastructure, there is a sewer backup assistance fund if there were issues related to damages from a sewer backup. But
Okay.
Yeah, I can talk about, so we, for a while, we had implemented a small increase to the customers' bills to build that fund up. And Chaney can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we that was at a time when SIRS, our insurance company for the city, didn't offer sewer backup policies. And we were one of the first ones to do that, and now SIRS offers that. And so it's changed over time. We may still have money sitting in that fund to help customers. Chaney can tell us for sure after checking. We could send out an email. But I know that we adjusted our policy with SIRS as well. So unfortunately, in the past, they just hadn't seen that as a big enough issue, but enough cities talked to them about adding that to our policies.
Okay. Chaney, did you have anything to add on that?
I did not. I think Bill covered it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate that update on the sewer system. Interesting stuff. Any other updates from, okay, Chief Hall?
What were you gonna say?
Got it. Just a quick update. This week, Montrose County Public Health has invited EMS, law enforcement, and fire staff to be vaccinated. So I am extremely, extremely excited. If I could jump up and down in front of you, I probably would, but I'm not going to do that. But I just wanted to give you a quick timeline based on what the county has sent out. They'll be finishing 1A this week and then doing those law enforcement EMS and fire vaccinations this week as well. And then starting in the second week of January, they will begin vaccinations of individuals who are seventy and older. And then they will also be adding in the governor's those individuals who the governor has deemed necessary based on some of the new definitions he sent out here a few days ago for, you know, the, the critical workers and things like that. So those will, those vaccinations will occur mid to late January. So it's, it's really good news because it's actually a little sooner than I know than I expected. I expected 1B to probably start occurring maybe towards, you know, maybe mid-February. So we're about a month ahead of schedule. Hopefully, it stays that way and vaccines continue to roll in. There is a link that you can pre-register for your vaccine, your vaccine. I'm honestly not sure if the county put it on their website or not, but go share that. So if you have any questions, I can answer.
Right.
I, this is not required by any employee of the city that's voluntary, that they get their vaccination. We're not forcing anybody to get vaccinated. Just so the public understands, we're not forcing anybody to do this. There, this is a voluntary program.
Chief Hall and, and Bill Bell both nodded. So they didn't say anything out loud because I think sometimes on Zoom volume is, it cuts out, but they both were affirmed to your comment.
It is, it is voluntary right now, but I mean, just from my own perspective, it's strongly, strongly, strongly encouraged just because of the community safety aspect and, and those kinds of things.
Great. And one of the changes at the state level that moved critical infrastructure employees up a little, I think addresses a need that the city identified, which was that our wastewater treatment, see, I was able to come back to sewer there. Our wastewater treatment facility is, is run by a very small group of individuals with very specialized knowledge. It's not something we are cross-trained on at the city. Bill Bell is not ready to step in and run the wastewater treatment facility as far as I know. And so I think when we talk about critical infrastructure, making sure that, that, that those individuals have access, should they want to be vaccinated, is that the kind of critical infrastructure that we're talking about?
I might answer that we've been in good touch with the county about whether any other municipal employees are eligible for the vaccine right now. And as of right now, this moment in time, only our police department officers are scheduled to get vaccines as a result of their profession this week. So we'll continue to be in touch with the county and with any additional City of Montrose employees that are eligible for a vaccination through Phase 1B.
Okay, I think we should look at those, those critical employees that we don't have cross-training for. Unfortunately, anyone could step in and run a Zoom meeting, but not everyone can run their wastewater treatment facility.
Yeah, I just want to mention that Anne would be the one that's been working with utilities on that. Thanks, Anne. But we should fight for that because the, as the mayor just mentioned, the wastewater treatment facility is our most critical infrastructure asset here at the city, and will have the most damage to our community if that fails. So we should keep.
Nice to be able to flush the toilet.
Right.
Not flood the river. There are just a lot of things that we need to do now.
Almost might suggest that our trash pickup service falls in that category as well.
And I think that's exactly what the kinds of jobs that, when the state was envisioning when they moved critical local government employees into, into 1B is those kinds of services that need to continue that can't, that someone can't cover for them or can't be put off a month to get done. So I think we should continue to be in contact with the county about eligibility for the city employees who do that stuff. Okay, um, any other department heads or managers or attorneys or city managers have items for discussion today? It's like, like Hollywood Squares on my screen. Okay. I don't see any. So with that, I think that our work session for Monday, the first one of 2021 is going to come to an end. We do have a city council meeting tomorrow at 6:00 PM via Zoom. And the public, of course, is invited. And during city council meetings, unlike work sessions, there is always an opportunity for public comment on everything on which council votes and for non-agenda items at the beginning of our meeting. So we look forward to seeing, I look forward to seeing all of you, and we look forward to seeing anyone from the public who wishes to join us tomorrow. Thanks, everyone.
Happy New Year.